Yes, I can all come to.
I get that, too.
Just look at the notes, please.
It is on the time.
Okay.
All right, everything's on.
Great, thank you. Welcome to the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-fifth public hearing portion of the Southampton Town Planning Board. So we'll go right to a roll call, please.
Achele Faro.
President.
Vice Chair Finnerty.
Present.
The Secretary is here. Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
Board Member Glazer.
Present.
We have a full quorum.
Please join us for the Fudge of the Albelesians.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, with this solemn and veridical presence.
Okay, our first application is John Peter Lauren. Do we have sufficient notice?
We do.
We do. David, want to read it into the record?
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number fourteen of two thousand and twenty-two, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five at six P. M. at Town Hall one sixteen Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-application entitled John Peter Lauren. The application consists of a standard plan with two lots where lot one measures forty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-four square feet and lot two, a flag lot, measures sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet, fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four square feet, excluding flag and wetlands on a two-point-three-nine-seven-six acre property previously improved with residential dwelling and accessory structures situated in the R dash forty zoning district and the New York State Archaeological Sensitive Areas and flagged on wetland inventory located two-eight-nine-nine Noyak Road within the hamlet of Noyak Suffolk County Tax Map number nine-hundred-dash-four-dash-one-dashfourteen-point-three.
Thank you.
Good evening. Joe Lombardi from the Reiner Group for the applicant. Our firm represents John Peter Loren, the owner of property situated two, twenty-eight-nine-nine Noyak Road in Noyak, and he's seeking to subdivide the two-point-three-nine-seven acre parcel into two lots for single-family residential use. Subject parcel is located on the northerly side of Noyak Road, approximately two-hundred-and-ten feet west of Cedar Point Lane. It is in the R forty zoning district. Site is improved with existing residence, shed, a deck, spa, and a great barber. The applicant lives in the residence and plans to continue inhabiting it. All of the existing improvements are on proposed lot one, which will have an area of forty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-four square feet and have full frontage on Noyak Road. Proposed lot two will be a flag lot with an area, total area, of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet. This lot contains a small area of wetlands in the northeast portion of the property. The site, the edge of the wetlands was determined by Town of Southampton Environment Division on October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Excluding the flag strip and wetlands, this lot will have an area of fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four square feet. This lot is vacant. The property was the subject of a pre-application submission in two thousand, in two thousand and eighteen. The pre-application report, or a pre-application report, was adopted by the Planning Board on July eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. Due to the length of time that has passed, a new pre-application submission was required. That previous pre-application report mentioned that the site contained some significant trees. Those trees have been located and are shown on the new map. Most of those trees fall within the hundred-foot limit of disturbance from the wetland area, so there's not a lot of opportunity to disturb them. For the most part, the flag strip for lot two is twenty feet wide. However, the flag flares out as you get to Noyak Road to about twenty-nine feet where this was done so that a future driveway on lot two can avoid the two-and-a-half-foot diameter tree and a catch basin that's in the right-of-way for Noyak Road.
Do you have the site plan, Seth?
I have it up there.
No, no, don't worry. Don't. You don't have it up on there? Okay.
I have an extra copy if you want.
Yeah, do you mind?
I will pass it around. Maybe you can just pass it out.
So this is lot one with the residence and the improvements. This is lot two. It's vacant. The wetlands are in this area. These are the wetland setbacks.
And the flag comes up that side?
Yeah, the flag comes up the east side. This is where it widens in this area so that we can avoid the tree and the catch basin.
Good.
Seth, that, that blue, is that a?
What? This is the wetland.
So it's different from what's shown on this plan?
Well, the flagging is quite recent, literally. It's either August or October of this year, so then this is just a general, these are known to not be spot on.
I got you. Do you want the flagging of the wetlands on the show on that line?
The wetlands are in this, right in here. They were flagged by Marty on August of this year and located, feel located in October.
Okay, so what's shown on the map on the area is completely different.
Yeah.
Usually, usually the property lines are a little off.
No, so I'm just going with that, so. But I mean, they have the wetlands coming all the way down to the all the way down to Noyak.
Yeah.
Under the.
Right, I understand. And they do go further north and east from the property.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So is, do you have a C. of O. on the house? It says here, you know, pre-existing certificate of occupancy? You don't know?
I, I don't know. I'll ask the owner. The house is, is quite old.
Has an A. Y. B. of nineteen fifteen, and it has a regulatory search for certificate on two thousand and nineteen, so I don't see a C. of O.
Okay, just so you know. Okay. Any questions on the board?
No.
So this is a pre-app. We want anybody, anybody on Zoom?
Excuse me, I have a question. I don't know if I can speak.
Yes.
Come up to the podium. Identify yourself, please.
My name is Barry Ulrich. I live at thirty-one Cedar Point Lane, just north of the property
Yeah.
that is in question here. I understand his survey and what they've done. They've outlined the limit of disturbance at one hundred feet, setback for building at one-twenty-five, and setback limit for septic at one-fifty. So does that tell me that the house is going to be built in the southwest corner?
Address your question to us and we'll get it.
Okay. I'd like to know where the house is going to be built on the property, how large the house is going to be. Is there going to be a pool, a tennis court, a pickleball court, a pool house? What kind of accessory structure is going to be on this property? And I'd like to know more.
We can't answer those questions.
I don't know that he can give you those answers now, but Joe, you want to?
Well, what about one question? Can you tell me, please, where you think the house might be situated or located on the property? Sure.
This is a subdivision.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the flag lot and the subdivision.
Sure. Where are you on this map?
My property, ma'am. Excuse me if I can just show up.
Sure.
Here. I am on, from here to here, Barry Ulrich.
Okay, so you're on the north side.
Yeah, north, east, and so forth.
Right.
Okay, so I went through wetland problems because I built the house in two thousand and nineteen. So I went through.
Yeah, those wetlands go up.
Exactly. Part of this is some of mine.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anyway.
So anyway, you actually benefit from the fact that this is the hundred-foot non-disturbance area, so nothing's going in here.
So any of these trees, these are going to remain?
Those, these trees can't be disturbed.
Because there's some massive beautiful trees in here.
Good.
Okay, great, great.
Yeah, so they're all within, that's what I was saying, they're all within that area of non-disturbance.
Okay.
So the house is going to be located probably as far away from you as it could be on the site.
Fabulous. Nothing. You understand what I'm saying. This is a beautiful area back here. We know this gentleman over here, and, you know, so you're telling me it's going to be in this area somewhere?
Yeah, it's going to be right in here, and there's not, because of the wetlands and the setbacks from the wetlands, there's not a lot of opportunity to put
So also with these setbacks.
Accessory structure.
Right, so pool and so forth can't go out here later at a later date?
No.
No.
It cannot, okay.
Okay, good.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You don't know anything about structure size of house, square footage, or any of that stuff?
No.
No, all I, I mean, I can tell you that the building envelope is, I think, around four thousand square feet.
Would I be notified of these types of things? Or no? I'd have to file a FOIL again to figure out, or?
You'd see a bulldozer pulling up.
Well, that's the thing, you know, I come home from work and there's an excavator there and the lot's cleared, and they go, oops, I did, I went too far.
Yeah, we've seen that.
I've seen that myself.
But not here, though. This is.
Here, no.
I've seen it on my own property.
They have to flag, they have to put a barrier rather than disturbance area, you know, the A. build.
Yeah, yeah. So can I show you one thing where when I did mine and Mr. Shea came out and documented the neighbor's property across the street in my report about property being cleared illegally, and nothing was done about it? Let me write down here. You can have this. The property was cleared illegally, commented by Mr. Shea.
Yeah, I mean.
You can have it. I don't need it. I have many.
Okay. All right.
That's all I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Your name was?
Joe.
Joe Lombardi, thank you. Barry Ulrich, thanks.
Uh, any other questions? And no one on Zoom?
I would just point out that the Aquifer Protection Overlay District is across the street.
Yeah.
So it is not in the Aquifer Protection Overlay District, just if you're curious.
There is someone on Zoom.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if you can hear me.
Can you speak, speak a little louder, please?
Uh, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Can you up the volume on yours?
Let's see. Uh, I'm not sure I know how. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
I, I just wanted to reiterate what Barry was saying. I, my, my property, the back also abuts.
Name.
Please, your name?
My name.
And address.
Adam Nadler, fifty-four Dumars.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Adler.
And I just wanted to make sure that, that, you know, at the very least, twenty-foot boundary would be respected, um, at least as far as, you know, my property and I, you know, certainly Barry's property is concerned. And I know I heard the conversation about the trees and that, but I just wanted to kind of put my two cents in about it.
Joe, is there any, any question of the, of the applicant's representative?
Well, it's, I mean, it's just a question of how, like, I know, I heard Barry say, you know, how will I know? And it's, and somebody said, well, a bulldozer will show up, and so my question is how am I assured that, um, that the twenty-foot, I mean, my understanding is it should be no building inside twenty feet to a boundary. Is that right?
I think it's much larger than that. It's a hundred, hundred feet.
Well, accessory structures in the R forty zone, I think, is.
But isn't there a hundred-foot non-disturbance buffer?
There's a hundred-foot non-disturbance buffer from the wetlands.
From the wetlands.
There's very limited, if any, area that can be built on in that northwest corner of the site because of the setbacks from the wetlands.
Yeah.
Right, I understand, but very limited doesn't mean zero, right?
No. You won't be able to get a house on there. It's a building lot.
What's that?
You will be able to get a house on there. It's a building lot.
I know, but a shed or a tennis court or a?
I think you're not referring to the whole lot. You're referring to the area that abuts your property, right? So I think what we heard is that because the hundred-foot setback from the wetlands is practically nothing that can be built in that northwest corner.
That's correct.
But when I, what I'm saying is when I hear practically nothing, I get concerned. If it was zero, I'd feel less concerned.
Oh, absolutely.
Non-disturbance area, so nothing.
Well, you might be able to put a shed.
You can't put a garden in there. You can't put a vegetable garden in there, nothing.
Okay, so nothing, so it's not.
Non-disturbance, non-disturbance means you cannot touch the vegetation, the trees, the understory, nothing.
So it's a zero, it's a zero. That's fine. That's just what I wanted to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
If, if, how would I find out if a, if a request for variance was put in?
You could track the Z. B. A. calendar, I would think.
Does the Z. B. A. need a variant?
It's posted online on the town, town website. The Z. B. A. has an agenda that you could follow.
But the Z. B. A. cannot, they cannot modify that non-disturbance buffer. That's what you're concerned about.
They cannot.
No. No.
No, it's wetlands, yeah.
It's wetlands.
That disturbance buffer can never change at one hundred.
Even if they go to the Z. B. A., they cannot change that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any comments from the board?
Anyone else on Zoom?
Anyone else on Zoom?
No one else.
Oh, should be closed. It's a ten-day written.
It's a pre-app, so it's, um, ten days. A motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed abstention, seven, seven, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stay well.
Okay, um, Mayner Million, uh, do we have notice?
Yes.
Okay. Kate, want to read it into the record?
Please take notice that in accordance with local law fourteen of two thousand and twenty-two, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board Thursday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five at six P. M. at Town Hall one sixteen Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-application entitled Million. The application consists of a lot line modification of a transfer of two thousand and forty square feet from the developed lot at ten Red Creek Road to the vacant lot at twelve Red Creek Road in the R twenty zoning district within the hamlet of Hampton Bays Suffolk County Tax Map numbers nine-hundred-dash-one-seventy-five-dash-one-dash-twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Do we have a site plan on that, Seth?
I have one up there.
One on the wall?
Yeah, I'm afraid I'll take it down since no.
Is there someone here representing the application? Someone on Zoom?
Nobody's on Zoom at all.
Anyone here representing the application?
I had spoken to the, the owner and his, I think his son came in and dropped off the affidavits, but he was quite ill, so I guess that was it.
So what do we do with this?
They pop the comment, they quote?
Yes, simple lot line transfer.
Yeah, it's a simple, simple transfer, um, without public comment. I can certainly explain any, any questions. I can help to answer any questions.
Well, just give us a brief description of the application.
Yeah, so they, they wish to, uh, transfer from the larger lot here on the north to this smaller vacant lot. Uh, it will still be non-conforming. This is an R twenty, so it's questionable.
What's the square footage of either one? I don't see that in the, maybe it's on the agenda.
So the smaller lot is eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine, plus the two thousand gets it to thirteen and change. Again, in R twenty, it's just going to decrease the level of non-conformance. The reasoning behind it was the combined side lot and, and setbacks for the side yards. If they put on that extra bit, they would be in compliance, or the building envelope would be appropriate for what they're thinking of doing.
What's the size of the larger lot before the transfer?
Yeah, so the larger lot could accommodate a lot more of a reduction. It's thirty-eight, they're almost thirty-nine thousand. So I'm not sure what they were, they're trying to achieve. They, I know they have come in for a, a wetlands permit to demolish not only the, the house, the existing, uh, single-family home, but also this structure back here.
So they're creating a substantial lot?
They, they already have it.
Less substantial, right?
Less substantial.
They're decreasing the non-conformity.
Yes, so this has gone, this went before the Conservation Board. They have some interesting ideas for perhaps setting aside, they would be amenable to the idea if they were able to set aside some of the, some of the large mature-growth trees. That's, that was as of yesterday, and a performance bond as well.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, there's not much else to it.
Well, you can relate to them.
Yes.
Okay. There are no, no one wishes to speak to it. Anybody else on the board? A ten-day written comment period by Kate. Motion, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, seven in favor. Thank you, Seth. Rabbit Hole Restaurant. Gloria, read it into the record until we have notice. Will we have notice?
Yes, we do.
We do.
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number fourteen of two thousand and twenty-two, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five at six P. M. at Town Hall one sixteen Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video, video concert conferencing to consider the pre-submission conference entitled Rabbit Hole Restaurant. The application is to convert the two pre-existing residential structures into a restaurant use and associated parking situated in the motel business M. T. L. zoning district, located at two-eight-seven East Montauk Highway within the hamlet of Hampton Bays Suffolk County Tax Map number nine-hundred-dash-two-thirty-one-dash-one-dash-thirty-five.
Good evening. Lisa Poyer, Twin Forks Permits, on behalf of the applicant, is welcome. You have seen this application at a work session before the planning board, which was on August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. We had presented the option at that point for keeping the two existing structures and doing a restaurant in the larger structure and a cocktail kind of raw bar in the smaller structure. There is concern from the board about it being two different tenants potentially and two different uses. We did get a decision from the Building Department, which said so long as the two units were run under the same corporation, that it would be considered one use. However, we did take into account some of the concerns of the board, and we have proposed to demolish the smaller one, combine that area into the larger structure, and then to put the parking lot along that eastern side, I'm sorry, the western side of the property with access from the western kind of driveway entrance. We'll close off the other entrance, and then we would do, you know, landscaping around and do kind of a deck in front of the larger primary residence that we converted to a restaurant, which would have thirty seats inside and then fifteen bar seats. The seats would be scattered between the inside and the outside proposed deck, which is obviously on the water side. We are in the motel district. We have a motel on the west side there. Motel zone is behind us, but it is as a residence right now with the flag strip going along the east side, and then there is a residence to the east, still in motel zone, and then beyond that you have Edgewater Restaurant.
Certainly a better configuration.
Correct. We are at, going to be potentially asking for a variance for front yard parking. It would be for two parking spaces parallel to Montauk Highway. They have a front yard setback of, I'm going to say it's twelve feet instead of the twenty feet. That's, we would go to the Z. B. A. and ask for that request. Um, I think the planning board would have referral probably from them as well, so.
Okay.
That was on the site plan.
What's the motel to the?
Ocean View.
Ocean View, I guess.
And it is a fully functioning cute little motel. They just did some renovation work to it.
Yep.
I think the last year or two.
Yep.
Any questions on the board?
No.
Is there anyone on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, it's a pre-submission, so it's a thirty-day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, six, uh, seven in favor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And the last on the agenda, number four, is three-three-one oh Noyak Road. Do we have notice, counsel?
Yes, we do.
We do. Dennis?
Please take notice that in accordance with local law fourteen of two thousand and twenty-two, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, six P. M. at Town Hall one sixteen Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-submission conference entitled thirty-three-ten Noyak Road. The application's for a proposed workforce housing development for a total of eight dwelling units on two, in two phases on a twenty-four-eighty-nine, eight, two thousand, two-point-four-eight-nine acre tract, currently improved with the single-family residence situated in the hamlet, commercial zoning district, Aquifer Protection Overlay District, and New York State Archaeologically Sensitive Area located thirty-three-ten Noyak Road within the hamlet of Noyak Tax Map nine-hundred-fourteen-one-dash-sixty-six dot five.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Timothy S. McCully of counsel to Burke and Sullivan, forty-one meeting house.
They're on the mics.
So the property is located on the south side of Noyak Road in Sag Harbor. It's rectangular in shape. It's actually a corner lot, Noyak Road and Berkshire Drive. It has about two hundred linear feet on Noyak Road and about four hundred and seventy-five on Berkshire Drive. Right now, it's improved with a one-family dwelling with a pool and a couple of accessory structures. All of that has a C. of O. Back in nineteen, I'm sorry, in two thousand and twenty-one, uh, this board heard an application on this property. I don't know if some of you remember it, but the idea at that time was to take the residence, make it five units, and add two buildings with four unit, four apartments in each one, and you adopted the pre-application report. That's obviously long gone. Anyway, now the proposal is to leave the residence and the accessory structures as is and to put up two buildings on that property. Each building will be twenty-five hundred square feet, and each building will contain four units. All of the units, eight in total, will be affordable. Well, I had to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals preliminary to this meeting because under the code in three-three-one oh five, the building had to be with four units. They required twenty-eight hundred square, um, square feet. And so we got a reduction of that from the zoning board to twenty-five. And also, you can only have a maximum of four apartments on the hamlet commercial property. And we didn't want to get into dividing up the property because that's another added expense when we're doing all the affordable units.
Are these one-bedroom units, Tim?
No, there's, there's, each building has two two-beds and one, and two one-beds.
And what's the square?
I put the plans, I attached.
In total.
I attached it to the application, and that's where we got into a little bit of a problem on the square footage with, because we have the two-bedroom apartments and that's what required, the twenty-eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, I mean.
We couldn't, we couldn't make that.
Twenty-four, twenty-five hundred by four is like a little over six hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Which doesn't seem big enough.
But some of the, the, the bed, one bedrooms are, are smaller, the, the two bedrooms are bigger. The, the plans are attached to the application.
Okay, we haven't seen that.
Okay, well, I've attached that, all, all of that, um, I put it here.
I'm just curious.
They are full set of plans. I'm not sure if anyone wants to pull through them.
Yeah, I just, just what's the square footage of, of a two-bedroom versus a one-bedroom?
I see. So he's, he's answered your question?
No.
We know the square footage of a two-bedroom, a typical two-bedroom? You know the square footage?
I don't have that in, in Big Size.
One-bedroom apartment area is four hundred and sixty-six. A two-bedroom apartment area is six hundred and forty.
Okay.
So four sixty-six would be a one-bedroom, and two is six forty.
Tiny.
Very small.
Twenty by twenty. Less, less cleaning.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, easier to clean, easier to eat.
Anyway, the plans are attached to the application. In addition, we, because we were over the density for the Suffolk County Health Department, we had to go for a variance there, and, um, thanks to a lot of hard work by Dave Wilcox, we were able to find some credits from the town to transfer in. We went to the town board. The town board approved the transfer. We went to the review board, and they turned us down because one of the credits that we were using was not in the groundwater management for Noyak Bank. were using was not in the groundwater management for Noyac Bay.
Yeah.
So now we're in the situation where we intend to do one building, get approval from the health department, and work on getting approval for that second building. Dave Wilcox, right now, said he's looking for more credits and maybe one that will apply. So we're hoping to get that. Or, you know, maybe the rules will change because there's a lot of pressure from all the need to get these affordable units approved.
So will you do it phased? You'll have a phase?
Yes, that was what I was just gonna say. So we're gonna do a phase. The way I want to handle it to get over that hurdle is to do a phase one and a phase two. Phase one will be the building closest to Noyac Road, and then we'll come back on the second building, you know, if, if we can get it done.
Yeah.
And you mentioned an affordable component? They're all affordable?
Pardon me?
They're all going to be considered affordable?
All are affordable.
Okay.
But we couldn't meet the definition, or we couldn't meet two sixteen, the code two sixteen, which is affordable overlay, because we don't have enough property. You need two hundred and twenty thousand square feet for that. So we couldn't meet that, but other than that, I think we meet all the requirements.
Just to note that Janice Shearer was here earlier and said she is working with Homes and Community Renewal on potentially funding for smaller projects like this. So you could speak to her and see if there's.
We tried that. We don't fit in, do you mean the water quality?
No, um, for the affordable housing credits for the, from the state, that they're trying to work on giving credits to smaller projects as well as some of the larger projects.
Yeah, that's what I'm working on. I'm trying to reach out to, um, you know, I, I guess it'll be Tommy John Scavoni now, and, uh, I intend to do that. I'm working whatever angles I can work to try to make that, get the health department because even though they denied us, they did say, if you get that credit, we're good with it. That's where we are.
Any other questions on the board?